Okay, good evening, everybody. We welcome you here tonight. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Remco Bramit as our chaplain to lead us in invocation.
Thank you. I'm pinch praying for Jeff Kane tonight, who could not make it. "Our God in heaven, the Scripture tells us that government is instituted by you to stave off chaos and lawlessness, and in this ever-complicated world, we need your divine wisdom and strength to rest upon ours. And so, we pray that you pour it out in rich measure on the mayor and the city council and the city staff that is gathered here tonight, in their decision-making, in their governance, in their day-to-day executive decisions that affect the well-being of our citizens. We ask that your hand of favor would rest upon this entire city and all of its citizens in the form of safety and well-being and peace in our families, and that tonight, as police officers and firefighters are at the ready to serve our citizens, you would keep them safe and give them strength in the execution of their duties. We thank you that we can bring all these prayers to you, knowing that you hear them, you delight in them, and you answer them. In your name we pray. Amen."
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, October 19th, 2015, to order. Suti, if, as a city clerk, you'd please call the roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll be happy to call roll for the October 19th, 2015, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Burke Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Rick Morick is traveling in absent this evening. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, and welcome you all here to our city council meeting. We're glad you're here. Suti, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item is approval of the meeting agenda. Agenda item number 15-265.
Okay, do I have a motion on the agenda?
I believe we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, do we have any public comments, Suti?
We do have one general public comment, sir.
Okay. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There are no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation, and when your name's called, you please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. And each person will have five minutes for remarks. So, I'll open up for public comments, Suti.
This is Ms. Brenda Hemphill.
My name is Brenda Hemphill. My address is 12960 Highway 9 in Milton. And I asked to do a general comment because, basically, hopefully it'll be a little different than what you might be used to, but I just wanted to come here tonight to thank you. To thank you for Katie's Car Wash being part of the city of Milton since it was formed. I think we were one of the first people to ever get a CO in this town, which was, you know, new for all of us. And Katie's has always been a part of Milton, and we've always loved that. Our vision was to be a small, family-owned, community-involved business, and I think we succeeded with that. We supported the police department by washing the vehicles from day one. We added the little white trucks after that. We never could figure out how to do the fire trucks, so, anyway. But, anyway, I wanted to say thank you because, at the same time, I want to say goodbye. I know all of you up there for different venues, or meetings, or committees, or whatever, and it's just been a joy for us to be part of this city when the city was brand-new. We got to grow with you, and it was an opportunity that, to coin a phrase, was priceless. The good news is, is the new owner is a local individual who owns a couple of more washes than I did, but who is a community citizen and likes to support community programs, and we have been giving him all of the information from the various schools we participated with, as well as the various people. So, I'm hoping Katie's legacy, even though the name will change, will live on as a community business that will always enjoy being a part of the community that we enjoyed. So, thank you very, very much. Some of you I will maybe miss and not see, but some of you I hope to keep in good touch with, and thank you again for letting me be a part of committees and a part of this city. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, and Brenda, thank you for all the past several years as a business owner in Milton, and it's been an honor to have Katie's as part of our city.
My pleasure.
Do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay. You can move on to the consent agenda, and Suti, if you'll please call this item.
First item is approval of the September 21st, 2015, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 15-266. Next is approval for the purchase of an aerial fire apparatus as a replacement for the current fire line unit. Agenda item number 15-267. Next is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Arcadis U.S. Inc. for the Milton Stormwater System Inventory FY15 update. This is agenda item number 15-268.
Mayor, a move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Luss, second. Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Suti, if we move on to reports and presentations, if you'll please sound the first item.
This evening, we have an update on the city of Milton Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight is one of the first installments in our update, the Transportation Master Plan that, you know, we've kicked off this year. Tonight, we've got representatives from Kimley Horn, who've been doing that plan for us to give you this first installment. I'd also like to introduce Marissa Marshall. She's an intern from Milton High School, who's been instrumental in helping us get some of our stats together and helping Sarah on our end with that report. But Christina Pastore and Mark Eetman are here from Kimley Horn to give you an update on where we are with our Transportation Master Plan. It's all yours.
Thank you so much, Carter, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. We are really excited to be here. As Carter mentioned, my name is Christina Pastore, as many of you know. I am serving as the project manager for Kimley Horn. We are the consultants serving on this project. And we collectively are excited to be here, but in particular, I am truly very excited to be here. If you, you may remember, I was a part of the 2009 CTP, and so, it's really exciting to be back, to be able to work with the community and the staff, and to see so many familiar faces on the elected leadership, so I'm really enthused. Additionally, as Carter mentioned, Mark Eetman is here with me. Mark actually just joined us a few months back, and he came from Marta, where he was working on the Connect 400 plan, so he has a lot of great knowledge and background on North Fulton, so we're happy to have him here also. So, tonight's purpose is really just to give you an overview of what we're going to be doing as a part of the transportation plan, but before we get started, I want to talk a little bit about some progress since the last plan. One of the first things that Carter said when we started this was, we want to be able to look back to 2009 and see where we stand relative to transportation since that time. And so, in your hands, you have a copy of our diagnostic report, a very simple document that is a great reference for you. If you open up that diagnostic report, one of the first things you'll see is a look at traffic. And so, there's a map there that you can see that gives you a little bit of a background. So, back in 2009, we used a model that was developed by the Atlanta Regional Commission called a travel demand model. We use this. This is very typical for long-range transportation planning efforts. We look out from 2010 to 2030 and project what transportation is going to look like. It takes into account population and employment all over the 20-county metro and makes any sort of, you know, helps us to determine what the existing is, and then look out 20 years. And so, we used that and averaged that growth for 20 years as our first starting point. Then, we looked at what traffic, what traffic actually looked like over the course of the last five years. The places where you see the dots, the circles on the map, are places where the Georgia Department of Transportation collects traffic counts every year. And so, what we did was look at the last five years from 2010 to 2015 and average the growth that's happened in the last five years, and compared it to what we expected to see in the travel demand model. And as you can see and are probably excited to see, most of the locations across Milton were actually, the traffic was lower than what we expected to see in the model. So, the projects that you've been implementing over the past five years still hold true and will continue to serve you moving forward. So, we really think that that's great, and know you do too, in your pursuit to keep Milton rural, moving into the future. Now, looking to those projects you've been implementing in the last five to six years, I can honestly say, I am so pleased, and you should also be too, just the amount of work that you have done as a council and as staff over the last five to six years is really quite tremendous, the transportation improvements that have been done. So, just to give you some examples, we recommended approximately 30 transportation intersection projects in the plan in 2009. Of those 30 projects, 12 of them have either been completed or are currently under construction. Seven are completed, five are currently under construction. Of the remaining projects, 17 of them have already been initiated. That's tremendous amount of progress in such a short period of time. So, there's a lot of really great things happening here in Milton, and you're seeing them on a regular basis. When we look at roadway maintenance, it's funny, when we go out to the public and ask people what their priorities are, almost always, road construction, paving, and maintenance of roadways is always one of the top things people want to see, and, because they drive the roads every day, they hate the potholes, so that's always something that comes up to the top. And so, when we look at what Milton has accomplished in the last five to six years, excuse me, you can see, you have paved almost 44 miles of roadway in the city, replaced, repaired nine bridges, and replaced two. And if you look closely, you'll see that Birmingham Highway is also a different color. As you know, Milton is not responsible for replacing or repairing any state routes. So, in addition to the roadways that you have done as a city, GDOT has also come back and repaved that roadway, so that's even more miles of roadway that have been repaired in the last five to six years. Moving beyond all of the roadway improvements, you also have done a lot of great work relative to bicycle and pedestrian improvements, nearly two miles of new bike path, over 13 miles of new sidewalks have been constructed, a half, over a half-mile of bike lane with an additional almost 12 miles of bikable paved shoulder, and nine pedestrian intersection improvements throughout the city. Now, corridor projects, we know, are often a little bit more challenging and time-consuming. They take longer, they take more money, so it's, those are a little bit harder to go, to get moving, but there's one really important corridor project that's, that has been initiated, and that's the State Route 9 Widening Project. GDOT began that project, the design for it, in 2013, and program, funds are programmed for right-of-way acquisition in 2019, followed by construction in 2022. State Route 9, as you know, is such an important facility, is a parallel route to Georgia 400, and really, you know, helping traffic to move along the outskirts of Milton. So, that's another really, really important win for the city of Milton. And then, of course, there's a lot of policy implementation. As you obviously well know, you have recently adopted an impact fee program that was studied for viability early in the CTP process. You also now have bike racks as a requirement for all new non-residential development, flexible street design standards, and traffic calming measures happening all across the city. So, what fantastic work has been done, really, truly hats off to you as a council and staff for the amount of work that has been done. I've seen counties sometimes not accomplish this amount in the, in five to six years, so congratulations to you. Now, looking forward, we started the transportation plan approximately in August. This is about a year process. And so, for the first couple of months, what we were working on was really making sure we have a robust public engagement process, because that is so critical, and also working on some of the initial inventory of existing conditions. So, what you can see on the back of your diagnostic report is a timeline for the overall schedule. As I mentioned, we're in the midst of doing a lot of the early inventory work, updating what was done in 2009 with everything that has happened since then. Following that, we'll be moving into our needs assessment phase, where we're looking at our current conditions, and then looking out another 20, 25 years to say, what are our needs going to be relative to transportation moving forward? The final phase is going to be our recommendations phase, where we develop a list of draft projects and policies and bring them out to the community for discussion. Now, along with a robust technical process, we know how important it is to also have a very open, honest conversation with the community. That qualitative and quantitative balance is really important. So, I want to highlight some of the many opportunities that we're going to have as a part of this process for the community to provide input. Public meetings have always been kind of the go-to, and they're really important for making sure that people have a place where they can come to speak to us about transportation. And so, the first opportunity for that is actually coming up on Wednesday, November 18th, at the Milton Public Library. Look forward to seeing you all there. That's going to be our first opportunity to talk about visioning, where are the priorities for the community, and then, where do people see the needs? You know, let's talk about this intersection that might be congested, or this sidewalk gap that, you know, would help my child be able to walk to school. We want to, we want to understand what those priorities are from people. And then, we'll come back out again in the spring for a traditional-style public meeting. Back in the spring of 2016, where we're going to present a list of draft recommendations to try to understand what people think of the recommendations that we've developed, and for them to give us an opportunity for feedback. Now, we know everybody has so many different things going on in their day, you know, soccer games, and running their kids here, and running late from work, probably sitting in traffic, trying to get home, and so, it's not always reasonable for people to come to public meetings. And so, it's really important to us to be able to go to where people are in the community. So, we've got four different events planned, community events, where we are truly going to go to where the public is. The first two are football games. We were at Milton versus Alpharetta back in August, and on October 30th, we will be at Cambridge High School for the football game there. So, if any of you are planning to be at the football game, make sure to keep an eye out for us. We will also, in the spring, be at Bell Memorial Park. At the same time as our public meeting is planned in that spring timeframe, we're going to have more of an open house kind of a feel. People can wander in in the middle of their Little League games and be able to give us feedback on transportation projects. And then, hopefully, the last will be the Milton hometown jubilee, also in the spring. So, those are some of our community events. Additionally, those are all opportunities for people to come together to talk about anything and everything related to transportation, but sometimes, we want to focus in a little bit more on some of the detailed areas. We're going to be conducting three focus groups: bicycle, pedestrian, and one with a larger inclusionary focus, particularly open to those with disabilities who may have different challenges regarding transportation that we may not normally hear about in traditional public meeting-type settings. So, we really, those are going to be very targeted conversations to those specific topics. Everyone will be invited. We're in the process of determining when and where those will occur. They'll be invited and posted on the website. And then, finally, because we know how technologically savvy everybody in Milton is, and Carter feels, he's, he has definitely said how very technologically-minded everybody is, that we wanted to have a really, really strong online component. And so, we are going to be building off of your website. Your website is already built really well for that. We've got a CTP page that's ready to go. We're going to be putting videos and possibly some polling up there, so that people can routinely come to the website, listen to a video if they didn't get to make it to the last meeting, and be able to understand and catch up in the process on where we are. We're also going to be building off of your existing Facebook and Twitter sites, because you have a great following already, so we'll be providing updates there. And we'll also be conducting MetroQuest surveys. If you participated at all in the Atlanta Regional Commission's update, they were conducting MetroQuest surveys. They're online surveys. They can work on your mobile device or on the website. They're very easy to do, very short, but it's an opportunity for us to really engage the public online. They will happen at the same time as both of the public meetings. So, we've got a lot of really great opportunities. We look for you to be involved in the process, to encourage your constituents to be involved in the process. We want to get record-setting numbers of participation, so we're looking to you to help us to do that. And with that, I will open it up to any questions you might have.
Any questions from council? I just want to make a comment. Thank you for everything that you guys have done. It's, it's kind of interesting for those of us that have been here, some of us from day one and others for quite a while, and it's interesting. We've all had to kind of learn that with government, sometimes it takes a lot longer to get things done than on the private side, but it has, over the last couple of years, started to get rewarding to see the things that we've been working on for nine years, and some of them take five or six years to get out of the ground and accomplish, but, you know, just going over your, your packet, or your presentation here, and kind of reiterate some of the things that, you know, we have gotten a lot done, so.
You have a lot to be proud of.
Everybody. Bill?
Just one comment. Christina, early on in this contract, you were asked to look at feasibility study to connect into the Greenway. Would you go over the results of that study?
We have not, the, the early work that we have done so far, and I'm actually glad you brought that up, was for McGinnis Ferry specifically. So, that effort, we did advance to the beginning in light of the public meetings and things like that that were happening. So, we actually did do some early work on the McGinnis Ferry interchange testing and looking at some of the other improvements that need to be made to make sure that Milton is, is not being overrun with additional traffic that you're not quite ready for. So, we did do that upfront. We will be looking at the connection over to the Greenway as a part of this process. We haven't done that yet, but that will be a, a part of one of the projects that we test moving forward.
Look forward to seeing that.
Absolutely.
Joe, did you have? No, okay, sorry. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we don't have any items on our first presentation or public hearing, so we'll move to our zoning agenda. And Suti, if you'll please read the zoning rules and sound the first item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant in all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. Before beginning your presentation or comment, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization, if applicable. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ1514, U15-04, VC15-03, 3503, and 3505, Bethany Bend, by Wisterium LLC, to rezone from O-I Office Institutional and AG1 Agricultural to O-I Office Institutional and a use permit for a private school, Section 64-1831, to expand the existing school from 2,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet for up to 150 students. A two-part concurrent variance to reduce the 50-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to a 20-foot landscape strip along the north property line, Section 64, 1091A, and second, to reduce the 100-foot setback for recreation areas to 20 feet along the north property line, Section 64-1831B4. This is agenda item number 15-262. First presentation was at the October 5th regular city council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We have an aerial photo showing the site in red. As you can see, there are two parcels there. Current zoning shows that the, the one in red is zoned O and I, but the one above it to the north is zoned AG1, and they requested to zone the entire parcel to O and I. The revised site plan was submitted on September 23rd of this year. And I'll run through some of the elevations to show you. These elevations were a result of working with the city architect and taking the DRB comments into hand for the redesign of this building to reflect these elevations. In terms of the subject site, the subject site contains 2.89 acres and is developed with a 2,000-square-foot current Red Apple Montessori School at 3505 Bethany Bend. It is zoned O and I pursuant to Z03-152 approved for daycare in the existing building with a total of 50 students. The subject property next door at 3503 Bethany Bend is a single-family residence zoned AG1. This property is located within the State Route 9 overlay district and not the Deerfield Form Base Code area. In the applicant's letter of intent, he requests to expand the current capacity of 50 students to 150 students. In addition, the school will serve not just the current preschool, but include elementary school classes, hence, the requirement for a use permit for a private school. The expansion will require the adjacent property at 3503 Bethany Bend with a newly-constructed 6,000-square-foot building. The added classes will require an additional 10 teachers. Based on the applicant's revised site plan submitted to the Community Development Department on July 19, staff offers the following considerations. In terms of development standards for Office Institutional, the site plan indicates compliance with the development standards for this O and I zone. The applicant is requesting the zoning district for those students who are less than four years of age, which requires a daycare facility and is allowed by right within the O and I district. However, the school-aged children require a use permit. Staff has evaluated the existing and future right-of-way requirements based on the revised site plan received on September 23rd and is in compliance with the minimum building setback of 40 feet for the proposed new building along Bethany Bend. Development standards as they relate to a private school use permit. The site plan indicates compliance The site plan indicates compliance with the development standards for the use permit with the exception of the following, and this therefore requires a variance, to reduce the 100-foot setback for recreation areas to 20 feet along the north property line. In the staff's opinion, the proposed reduction of the setback to 20 feet would not have a negative impact on the adjacent property based on the fact that it will be developed with a much more intense use. Additionally, relief of granted would not offend the spirit and intent of the zoning orders. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of VC-15-03 Part II. State Route 9 Overlay District. Staff notes that the proposed new building will also need to comply with the State Route 9 Overlay District prior to the issuance of a building permit. The revised site plan received on September 23rd does show the required sidewalks along Bethany Bend and Morris Road to be a minimum of six feet in width. At the time of the LDP, is, when that, when the, the time that the land disturbance permit is submitted, the applicant will need to show the sidewalk on the plan. The site plan shows compliance with the requirements of the State Route 9 Overlay District with the exception of the following, which requires another variance, and this is VC-15-03 Part I, to reduce the 50-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to a 20-foot landscape strip along the north property line. Excuse me for a second here. Okay. "In the staff's opinion, that the proposed reduction of the buffer to a 20-foot landscape strip would not have a negative impact on the adjacent property based on the fact that it will be developed with a much more intense use. Additional relief of granted would not offend the spirit and intent of the zoning orders. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of VC-15-03 Part I." Landscape strips and buffers. The site plan is complying with the following required landscape strip and buffers as required by the State Route 9 Overlay District. Fencing. The overlay requires a black four-board equestrian fence not exceeding 55 inches in height along Bethany Bend and Morris Road. The fencing is shown on the revised site plan. The applicant has not indicated the type and height of fencing to be used to enclose the play areas on the site, however. The fence type and height shall comply with the State Route 9 Overlay District. Environmental site analysis. In reference to the environmental impacts to the site, it satisfies the requirements of Section 64-2126. Arborist comments. His comments include there will be no specimen trees impacted by the newly developed building or parking, and that the city, Arborist, also noted that there is a small area of wetlands on the site, but not within any disturbed area. This is a breakdown of the physical impact, and the present value of the annual net physical impact on this site over 20 years is $65,128. In terms of public involvement, there was a community zoning information meeting held on June 23rd. There were four members of the community in attendance. The community asked the applicant some general information questions about the project. There was a public participation report. The meeting was held on September 14th. There were four people who attended. Those in attendance were not opposed to the request, and there were no issues to be resolved. There was a meeting of the City of Milton Design Review Board on July 7th. There were several comments that emanated from that meeting. Essentially, to condense their comments, they felt the structure was, did not have the Milton look. Subsequently, staff notes that the applicant worked closely with the staff to address the DRB's comments. The report includes building elevations in response to the DRB and staff's direction regarding the design of the building, and those elevations I did share with you earlier in this report. Also, the site plan has been revised to address the DRB comments, as I mentioned. Standards of review. One, the proposed expansion of the existing Montessori School at density of 2,759 square feet per acre is suitable based on the adjacent and nearby developments. The City of Milton approved their 2030 comprehensive plan recommending high-density residential at three to five units per acre in 2011 based on the city's vision for the area and for the subject parcel currently zoned AG-1. This chart essentially breaks down the neighborhood surrounding uses and their densities. This next one is a visual of that chart. "In the staff's opinion, the proposed expansion of the Montessori School will not adversely affect the existing uses of adjacent or nearby properties if approved with staff's recommended conditions. If developed with the recommended conditions, staff does not anticipate an excessive or burdensome uses of existing streets, transportation facilities, or utilities. The proposed span, expansion is partially consistent with the comprehensive plan. In addition, the proposed development is consistent with the following plan policies: that we will support programs that retain, expand, and create businesses that provide a good fit for our community's economy; also, that we support appropriate residential and non-residential infill development and redevelopment ways that complement surrounding areas. Finally, in the staff's opinion, that since the adoption of the plan, the surrounding development of high-density residential and especially commercial development to the east and Forsyth County and the increased traffic in the area have changed the character of this area." Use permit considerations. The proposed development is located in both the commercial and service land use category on the City of Milton 2030 Comp Plan map. The subject site is compatible with the adjacent and nearby land uses in zoning districts based on the existing zoning on a portion of the property and approved senior living facility at density of 20 units per acre to the north. Residential development ranging from 4.99 units per acre, which is in Forest, to 12 units per acre, which is the reserve at Deerfield. The proposed use's effect on the traffic flow vehicular, pedestrian, along adjoining streets should be mitigated with the location of the entrance, the required left-turn lane into the property, and required sidewalks. The off-street parking is located in the sides and rear of the existing proposed buildings, which is the appropriate location, as required by the State Route 9 Overlay District. And you see at the bottom of the page here, the total number of required parking spaces for the use at 20, and the total provided is also 20. There is a large amount of protective screening to the west adjacent to the Hidden Forest subdivision. The hours of operation are proposed Monday through Friday to be 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. In the staff's opinion, that the above-mentioned hours of operation are reasonable for the proposed use. The site plan indicates a one-way in and one-way out for ingress and egress to the property. This allows the student drop-off and vehicular turnaround to be provided so that flow of traffic is to remain forward in motion. Conclusion. The proposed development is partially consistent with the 2030 City of Milton Comprehensive plans, suggestion of high-density residential developed at three to five units per acre in retail and service. Based on the fact that there is a higher-density residential adjacent to the north, southwest, and east within the City of Milton, and retail commercial to the east and Forsyth County, in the staff's opinion, the proposed rezoning from AG-1 and O-N-I to O-N-I is appropriate and therefore recommends approval conditional of RZ-15-14 and U-15-04. In addition, staff recommends approval conditional of Parts I and II of VC-15-03. Planning Commission reviewed this application at its meeting of September 23rd. The Planning Commission recommended approval conditional as presented by staff, but asks that the days and hours of operation for the school be included in the conditions. This was passed unanimously, six to zero. Recommended conditions: the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows. Restrict the use of the subject property to a private school and daycare facility in the existing structure and proposed 6,000-square-foot structure not to exceed 8,000 square feet in size at a maximum density of 2,759 square feet per acre, whichever is less based on the total acreage zone. Restrict the number of students to 150. Restrict the days and hours of operation to Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following: to the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on September 23rd, 2015; prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy to comply with all regulations of the Georgia Department of Early Care and Learning; to provide a 20-foot landscape strip along the north property line; provide a 20-foot setback for recreational areas along the north property line; to dedicate at no cost the City of Milton prior to the approval of a certificate of occupancy sufficient land as necessary; to provide installation modification of transportation infrastructure according to Chapter 48, street sidewalks, and other public places of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances; to provide a straw mortar, concept, to provide a straw mortar management concept plan to be submitted and approved by the Milton Public Works Department prior to submission of land disturbance application. That is my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Kathy from council? Bill?
Excuse me. Kathy, in the environmental analysis, I noticed there's a stream on the site, and the structure sits pretty close in elevation to the flood plain, or the intermediate flood. How does the finished floor elevation relate to the, to the intermediate flood?
Well, we haven't received the, any of the building plans at this point, and they won't be prepared until after the zoning is in place. In terms of the existing building, however, which is there, the owner and the applicants are here, and they perhaps could respond to that question.
How, how close is the structure going to be to the stream and to the, to the stream And the scale that we're looking at here, it's hard to determine.
Robin, do you want to, Carter? Here.
So this just shows the existing conditions with the existing structure on it. It doesn't show the proposed structure relation to the stream.
Right, and it's outside, the proposed, it's outside. I mean, it's not in this, it's not in the stream buffer, no.
Okay, how about its relationship with the flood plain?
Right, and it's also outside the flood plain as well. I mean, the applicant's engineer is here, so you can ask him specifically, but it's not located.
That person's here, why are we asking?
I know.
Well, I was going to...
Address that when it gets surrounded.
Excuse me, I was going to say, when we get to that, and have the applicant up, then we can also ask those questions, too.
Okay, I also have one other question in the, in the conditions. Number four, the owner's agreement, 4A1 and 4AI and 4A-DL, provide at least 35 feet of right-of-way from the center line of Bethany Bend along the entire property frontage, then on II, it's reserved 45 feet of right-of-way from the center line along the entire property frontage.
And I asked that same question to Robin about an hour ago, and, and Robin can give us the answer.
No, actually.
All right. Carter, okay, fine. Yes, I, it sounds inconsistent, but it really isn't.
One's a dedication, one's a reservation.
Okay, that's what I figured out.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Karen?
I have two questions. Number one, on the financial study, did that include the new impact fees?
Uh, no, no. It's not in there, but you're right, we, we need to update our fiscal analysis to also include that.
So that will, and number two, I know the only issue we've had in the past with daycare is if, if there are any restaurants that go in close by, they can end up with a problem with their alcohol beverage license. Is any of the property adjacent to that currently zoned so that if a restaurant or anything would go in, that this would pose a problem with, with the new addition to the daycare?
No, everything's residential unless, I know across Forsyth, there's a very large development, but I don't know if that would apply. I still think it would be pretty far away once the buildings were there.
Okay. Anybody else for staff? Obviously, we can ask more questions than the applicant, too. Okay. I'll open up to public comments if we, first city would have those, including the applicant that would be speaking in support of this.
Do you want to say something?
My name's Eric Ware. I live in DeKalb County. That'd be 2915 Thornbrough Road. I'm working with Mr. Appen for his Red Apple Montessori School as a designer. You had questions about how far we are from the buffer. One buffer that I did retain from the surveyor is really not a stream. There's no running water in there, and it is labeled as a ditch. I know it's really hard to see at the scale that you have here, but it is labeled as a drainage ditch that probably was put in there at the time when these residents were put in there. That's what I have been told by the man who, who currently owns the property that we're going to put our building on. But we did, I do note on here that we're observing a 25-foot buffer even for that ditch, just because, again, it was provided to me by the surveyor, and it seemed reasonable, of course, to keep that buffer on there. There's a little block there near a tree that is sort of a little footbridge, and it's just muddy ground from there to the next footbridge. So again, there's never running water there until it rains hard enough to, you know, have watershed in a particular event. As far as, let's see, you, you had questioned elevations. Now, you have an elevation stated here on...
Excuse me, sir, can I break in just for a second? And Suzy, if you'll take notice on the clock, just for, for your sake, feel free to make your presentation, what you want to talk about, and then we can answer the questions later so that it does not eat into your time.
Oh, okay.
I want to give you your, your full time, so we can probably adjust the clock a little bit. So feel free to, you know, speak, use the time as, as you wish, and then we'll stop the clock, and you can answer the questions, so it doesn't take up your time.
Well, and just as, as a presentation for this project, we have pursued all recommendations to, I even have updated drawings here on if you're necessarily interested in looking at a site plan that, that indeed shows this sidewalk in a proper location and a fence, and even a, a site, a landscape plan likewise, if that's important for you to see at this time.
They already have that one, the 23rd.
No, but I mean, I have the updated one that, like you say, shows, shows a fence and...
The 23rd has...
Well, and the dimensions are a little easier to read, anyway. Okay, you're right, that one, I had the fence on there, I just have a site plan, a landscape plan in addition to that, since that's also part of Milton's requirements for landscaping the front of your property. I believe there was a question as to what type of fence. At this point in time, we, I had just called it a security fence. We're obviously willing to go along with whatever guidelines that are, that are required for this. Indeed, the school board requires that you have a fence that can secure an area, so it has to go, you know, eight feet, and typically, that's chain link. Again, there's things you can do to a chain link to disguise it some, but don't know how you guys follow, you know, that, that type of fence. That obviously is to be, come to conclusion as we do our plan review with Milton.
I think on that, we can, you can follow our council ordinance and adjust it to be secure.
And, and just as a final note, since, since it's already been questioned, and then the elevation for, for the building, I have raised it roughly about four feet above flood level there for the, from the 100-year flood plain. Best I can tell, 100-year flood plain seems to be running at about 1028. The flood plain line, as supplied to me by the surveyor, does not necessarily match the topo of the 1028, but it follows it pretty close, which seems a little odd that it's not, you know, following the contour, but that's what I've noticed, studying the two. Obviously, my drawing doesn't show all the different topos that get really, really messy to try to read with that. Anyway, somewhere around four feet above 100-year flood plain. Anyway, somewhere around four feet above a hundred-year flood plain. Mine ended up getting adjusted, you know, six inches or so depending on our final observation with, with elevation of bringing the road and the driveway through there, how much we want to build back up to hit the proper elevations. But it's certainly, that's in the ballpark, about four feet.
Anything else you want to add now, or you?
Well, that's, that's fine. Open it to questions.
Probably give a couple minutes for rebuttal if there are more comments. Okay. Are there any others speaking in support?
Only as needed, so you're good.
Okay.
Okay, and then, do we have anybody speaking in?
Opposition?
Opposition.
None.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing portion, and again, if, if the council does have any more questions for that, feel free to ask and discuss that. Is there any questions for the applicant? Matt?
I guess the only question, obviously, the hours of the school have been determined, but is seasonal as well as most school systems? Are you guys open during the summer, or?
Well, yeah, as I understand, of course, my client could probably better answer that, but basically, that is typical operating hours. The only thing that might, you know, Christmas party or something, as was brought up the previous meeting, and certainly, they do have that, an open house likewise, but as far as a, a standard method of, of operation, no, it wouldn't, it would not get out of bounds of that. Typically, no one's going to be working late, you know, you're there until the kids are gone. That's what keeps it pretty, pretty standard. I mean, obviously, they won't leave if someone is not picking up the children.
Right. And staff, we wouldn't have a problem if they had an open house that ran to eight o'clock or something like that. I mean, how would that work in this condition?
I think to the extent it's considered hours of operation, that would be the hours that the facility could operate. So I think to the extent you want to allow them to deviate on, for us, open house or something, I think we would need that, that deviation to be official so that we had something clear to enforce.
Okay, is there maybe a request they could make on their end to activate that, or is there a, I'm just trying to think?
I would hate to put somebody through the process of treating an open house as a special event. I mean, that seems as though we are making a crazy process overly, but, you know, maybe to the extent that you give some flexibility, Ken could maybe help craft that for some certain circumstances where the hours of operation are extended based upon different types of events, if you wanted to.
Is there, is there any way to, you know, basically, in my mind, hours of operation or the, the normal business hours they would be doing their, carrying on their business? If they had an open house, if parents come late or whatever, to me, that's kind of a...
That's not an operation.
An operation. Would, would that be, you know, is that clear enough that you wouldn't have to do anything, or?
Right, I mean, yes, but you get into the normal, the, the normal thing of, of a zoning condition that becomes basically a regulatory enactment that's got to be enforced by somebody, so, you know, it's always going to have a little bit of discretion. It's hard to sit here and think five years down the, the path and make sure we pick up everything. So to the extent we want to call hours of operation the normal and ordinary hours that the school conducts school business, that would be fine, and then just put in some flexibility. This shall not prevent, you know, special activities or special events, special event programming, something like that.
Okay, is that, if you want?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Does that make sense to the applicant too? We're not trying to make it harder.
Yeah, well, like, yeah, like you say, I mean, it's conceivable, you know, there might be some Saturday event or something, you know, that they, he might want to hold there in the future, but as it stands now, it's not necessarily in his business plan.
Again, that's, yeah, we wouldn't classify that as an operation.
And that's sort of how the conversation went at the last meeting.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, any questions for staff? Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll open up for a motion on this pro. Application, Chip?
Mayor, I approve, I move that we approve RZ fifteen dash fourteen slash U fifteen dash oh four slash VC fifteen dash oh three, thirty-five oh three and thirty-five oh five Bethany Bend by Wizdarium LLC, agenda item number fifteen dash two-six-two, with the exceptions that staff called out in terms of the recommendations.
As recommended by staff.
As recommended by staff, exactly.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria with recommendations by staff.
Yes, recommendations, those are the conditions.
Okay, let me, can we go ahead and read the whole thing? Sorry.
Just say it's with conditions recommended by staff.
Okay, with conditions recommended by staff. Sorry.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, I've got a motion by Councilmember Longoria for approval with recommendations by staff, and a second by Councilmember Coons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We wish you well with your, with your business. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Suti, if you'll please call the item.
Consideration of an ordinance to amend Appendix A Parks and Recreation Fees and Other Charges, Chapter Thirty-four, Section Twenty-four of the Milton City Code, Agenda Item Number Fifteen Two-Six-Three. First presentation was at the October fifth, two thousand and fifteen City Council Meeting, Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is a request to amend our fee structure for rental properties, Parks and Recreation related rental properties in accordance with Chapter Thirty-four of the City Code. What is changing is we're adding three opportunities for field rental, and one is the use of an artificial turf field without lights, one is an artificial turf field with lights, and also the meeting room at Bell Memorial Park. This is something that we have discussed among the Parks and Recreation Board, and they unanimously approved it. Pricing structure was gained by contacting surrounding community and comparing the pricing structure against the total volume of facilities they had to rent. So, there we came up with this pricing structure, and it's, we're asking your support on this amendment to Chapter Thirty-four. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, any questions for Jim? Matt?
I do, and it's not on this Meranicus thing. I saw it on the City Milton packet when I was looking at it, and there was another document that has some red line item, that has some language that kind of concerned me with regards to those that, the fees themselves, I looked at on this thing, I didn't have a problem with, everything seemed pretty much in line. I assume that the, the astrid turf field rates that we're talking about with the City of Alpharetta are similar to what they did at North Park, seventy-five dollars an hour?
Yes, sir.
So, which is higher than it was before, but I know inflation has kicked in. But the one thing I did have, and I, and I don't have it because it's not in front of us, but was a red line item language that prevented any organizations that participated in sports similar to what we already may have agreed with in a partnership with someone else, not allowing them access to rent field space if it ever is available.
Mr. Councilman, I believe that's the next item on the agenda.
Is that the next item?
That's right. It's the first item in new business.
Ah, okay, it goes all in the same thing on that last one. Well, then I will reserve my comment for the next one, so, just making sure.
Okay, anyone have anything else on the fees? Any misandos?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve Agenda Item Fifteen Dash Two-Six-Three.
Second.
Have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Thurmond. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So now we'll move on to new business. Suti, if you'll please call the next item, and Mr. Craig, you can just stay right there.
Consideration of a resolution adopting the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Department Revised Facility and Fields Use Policy, Agenda Item Number Fifteen Two-Six-Nine, Mr. Jim Craig.
Ladies and gentlemen, what you have before you is the previously adopted Facility and Fields policy for, which guides us on how we rent out facilities. We are making two sets of changes there. Towards the back, we simply add to it the rentals that you just agreed to previously, and make them part of the fee schedule. And then at the front, on what I believe is the third page, we worked very closely with the Parks and Rec Board as well as with the city attorney to come up with an agreement, some language that would permit us to enter into the opportunity of some seasonal long rentals in programming that we don't normally offer, targeting, for example, the opportunity to make the turf fields available on Sunday mornings to the local cricket organizations that are interested in making use of these facilities. Previously, the language that existed in this field facility use policy would have prevented that. So this is where we've come up with language that we're asking your support on, that would allow us to try and make our fields available to as many citizens as possible, either first through recreation programming, or second of all, where field and time permits, rental opportunities. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them for you. Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, Matt?
So, yeah, Jim, thank you. The only thing I had a concern on with this was item number one on the rental requests and the language that was there, which is request for a program or athletic sport already offered by MPRD or its partners will not be considered. Obviously, that was the, I think, phrase for the red line that we struck out and added the new language down below. My concern with that is, and I, and I'll look at examples, say, for example, if you have Eagle Sticks lacrosse and they run a lacrosse camp, but someone else may want to have availability for field space down the road, but they also happen to be a lacrosse organization, based on that language, they would automatically be disqualified from using the field space to run a lacrosse camp because we already have a partnership with an existing lacrosse organization. And I, I have a problem with that because, you know, we should allow for competition to come in. I imagine this would be a smaller event. I don't think it'd be a very frequent event, but I know that if someone were to want to use our, our field space, but they, just because they happen to want to use it for a particular sport, I don't know, they should be disqualified. And I'm trying to understand the reasoning behind that.
Well, first of all, item one is not changed, this, this was previously agreed to by the council, and the first time this was passed through. And the concept behind here is that we establish partnerships with our program providers, and as such, you know, we have partners such as Eagle Sticks, which earlier this year contributed a hundred thousand dollars to the city. Hopeful Baseball also did the same. We want to preserve that partnership, and we don't want to create a situation where they are in effect in competition when we are their program partner.
What would, to take that question a little further, what would, you know, as you all know, we, we picked the youth football program, and, you know, was talked about, you know, field space just in general between Alpharetta and here and the whole program, and we talked about if there was some available time, you know, what would that do to that if maybe the other football provider, you know, needed some field space and we had some available field space?
I think it would create a bit of a chaotic situation in that we have endorsed a program provider to be our recreation sponsor, our recreation program, and if we are bringing in other organizations, that doesn't work in support of their efforts to grow their organization. Of course, we have program partners, so we want them to grow and be successful.
It'd almost be like if we were providing those ourselves in-house, we'd be competing against ourselves if we offered something on a, on a daily or hourly basis to somebody else that doesn't necessarily have the skin in the game, as, as you said, you know, HYA or Eagle Sticks.
Sure, because, because each of these organizations, I agree with you, sir, each of these organizations, you know, they have to go through a series of background checks, all their coaches have to be background checked, there's standard training required of them for identification of possible sexual abuse by a child, other training that's required, concussion mandatory training, and we put a heavy burden, as well as insurance, we put a heavy burden on all of our program partners. But if we then start offering, you know, any available space to any organization which is to come along, we're not able to hold them to that same level of standard.
Okay. Anybody else?
Can I have more thoughts on that? I think there's a, you know, and I hear what you're saying, it makes sense to me, on the fact that we have these standards for particular programs that we do have partnerships with, but, and then I imagine that we're not gonna, I mean, we're at capacity already, we're building these fields because there's so much need for use that's happening right now as it is. But I also think too, that if someone, you know, just off the street wanted to rent a baseball field for a party, or wanted to race, rent a baseball field to play a game, in those two scenarios, the required use of that, we're judging them based on use. I don't think we're actively going out and recruiting people to play in those fields, but should we restrict someone just because of who they are? In, in my mind, I think that's what we're doing. I know we have partnerships with other organizations, but I do have a concern that if someone were to approach us without our going after them and just asking basically, hey, we'd like to reserve the field, and it's first come, first served on that end, you know, I think we can have some stipulations with regards to how they use the field for the, for the safety of the people that may be there, as well as the, the maintenance of the facilities, but I, I just don't like us automatically excluding people because of their affiliations. And, and that just has a, I have a big concern with that. If that's the way it is currently written in there, I think it needs to be changed. That's just my thoughts.
Well?
Maybe continue this, this conversation here too, and I understand where you're coming from, but it sounds to me like Jim has already stated, all of these different groups are pre-qualified to the extent that they have background checks, they have provided the required insurance for operating on our facilities and whatever other requirements there is here. So they'd have to, seems to me, they'd have to be identified for a while in advance of them even requesting use of these fields, so they couldn't just, somebody walking up to the programmer out there couldn't say, we want to use the field next Saturday.
The real benefit of being a, a program provider by the city primarily is just marketing. If you were a resident who wanted to play lacrosse, for example, then you would go to the city and see that the city promotes Eagle Sticks lacrosse, right? And there's a benefit for that because there's, you know, marketing fees that we as a city help maintain because that's the service we provide for our residents. Any other organization wouldn't have that benefit, which is the promotion by marketing. So what would then happen, if you don't have that, those individuals would have to pay for their own marketing, but if they were to do that, should, just because they have to do that, they then, as business owners, would take a risk on the use of the field with their ability to be able to get players based on that. Should we as a city, you know, have insurance requirements for something like that? Possibly, I could see that. I've, I've run football camps before, and the City of Alpharetta had to go through many of these things as well, but, but at the same time, we paid a heavy fee for doing, using the field space and renting it and following all these things, but we had no marketing help from the City of Alpharetta. So I can imagine other people may want to run, you know, camps or lacrosse or soccer or whatever, but if they were to ask for the field space, just because they are maybe a soccer affiliation, and then all of a sudden, we as a city say, you're not one of our partnerships, that automatically excludes competition, and maybe we have a market for lacrosse. We know we have Eagle Sticks, and they may run a camp or field, you know, one week a year, but why couldn't someone else come in and run an Eagle, or run another lacrosse camp next to the following week for the market? And we're basically saying they can't do that with a stipulation, so.
Is that really what you're saying then, Jim?
What we're saying here is create, imagine the scenario where a travel team is formed, a ten-year-old travel team, and that is formed under the auspices of the Hopeful Youth Association, in this case, we're talking about baseball, and you have a kid who doesn't make it, and so his dad believes his father And you have a kid who doesn't make it, and so his dad believes his father, dad believes this boy needs to be on the travel team. So he goes out and gets 11 more kids, forms a team, and then comes here and says, okay, I want to rent space and run my own travel team. Well, that's not, that's not okay. What we're saying here is that we have established program partners, we trust them to run recreation-level and limited advanced-level opportunities in all sports, baseball, football, lacrosse, both girls' and boys' lacrosse. We also work very closely to support the advanced-level teams that come to us from Cambridge and from Milton High Schools, and their junior feeder programs. Through our basketball and lacrosse, we're trying to support them. But these are all associations that come in as a partner to the city. I don't, we do not, as a Parks and Rec Board, and it is based upon my own experience, it's not a good policy. You don't show good partnership back to the organizations that are supporting us if you just allow anyone to come in and run their own program while we hold everyone else to a higher standard.
Let me ask you a question, the terminology, you know, running a program versus field use. And again, I guess where I'm going back to is, when we hashed through the youth football, as all of us remember, and it was, you know, divided amongst the room and the community because there were different program providers, and we chose one that we, as the council felt was the best route. But we also talked about with all the kids that were in here and the different programs, that, hey, you know, it's all about you guys, and we'd still work together and, you know, how to work together with Alpharetta and whatnot. So to me, I thought there was kind of an understanding, going back to that meeting, that, you know, hey, we're picking this provider and that's our program here, but, you know, if there's 10% of the time, 15% of the time, that that field's not being used, and as we're working together, you know, maybe occasionally you guys could use the field or whatever. And that was my impression, I'm not saying that's fact, but, you know, what about in a case like that? Let's say if the old AYFA, I guess it's in...
Whatever it's called now.
Whatever it's called now, you know, what if they needed some field space and we had a couple of slots that were available or whatever, you know, what would happen in that situation?
I don't recommend it as a good policy. It'd be the equivalent of, you know, office space at your office is not being used, allowing your competitor to come in and use your office space. What we're doing here is we establish our partnerships, and I'm trying to be a good partner back to them, just as they're trying to be a good partner to us. We adhere to the rules we're doing, they're paying a commission to us, and they're trying to grow a program with us supporting them. And I don't think it's a good policy to bring in competitors. If we're not happy with how, and I'll pick an example, I'll say Hopewell Baseball, if we're not happy with how they're running it, then we don't have to re-sign an agreement with them at the end of the year, we can go out and go attempt to find a different baseball provider. But I don't know that it's a good policy to try and use any available space. And I'll also say in the same breath, those field, especially those artificial turf fields, I have people coming after me trying to get even an hour's worth of time on them right now. And so what we're doing first and foremost is supporting the recreation programs, we're trying to support the junior programs, and we even have the high school coming to us asking for field space. And so we're trying to support all these requests. A one-off, I want to have a party and have a softball game, I can generally find the time for something like that, but an ongoing deal with a competitor to what we're already doing, I don't think makes sense. I don't think it best serves the Milton programs or the Milton community.
I agree with that.
That's my opinion, sir.
I can understand that, I guess where I would, you know, I may not feel as strong with the term competitor, you know, I look at all as a community, but I understand that. And to your point there, you know, that's a little bit where I was going, if it's a one-off thing, or, you know, I don't necessarily, you know, to me, we've been fortunate that some of our surrounding jurisdictions have, you know, we've worked with them and used some of their facilities. Now all of a sudden, we've got a, you know, beautiful facility that I think we're all proud of, you know, I don't want to send the message that, hey, this is ours and all, you know, let's, you know, let's open up to the entire region if we can, in general, but for, you know, one-off thing or something.
Jim? Do you think we're in a situation where we're going to have slack time on any of these fields?
By next spring?
At any time.
Not a chance.
Yeah, exactly.
And I, well, I actually, if we had approved this agreements at the last meeting, I could have rented more field space as of tonight.
Yeah, no, but my point is that our, your argument that you want to support the programs that the city has a partnership with.
Right.
We've got more program than we've got resource.
That is correct.
And so my point is that there's no way for us to, with a clear conscience, give away time on a field, because essentially what we're doing is we're robbing our own partner of their ability to operate the program that we've asked them to run for us.
That is correct.
Okay, so to me...
The most available open space right now is on Sunday mornings at the time, excuse me, at the time, a large percentage of our community is going to church, that's when the folks who are part of the cricket organizations are looking for field space.
I mean, the way I word it is that we have franchised the operation of our Parks and Rec program in very specific areas to third parties. We have a responsibility to provide them with the resources that they need to make those programs a success.
Including appropriate field time.
Correct. Yeah. But here's the slight problem, if I may, but if there is an event where there is field space available, and if someone who is a competitor, according to a definition, wants to rent that field space, even though it may be available, they will not be allowed to, just because of their affiliation with the sport that they may play. And I got a question for Ken on that, too. I mean, we are, it is a public field.
Right.
Right? I mean, public is the definition of public, I mean, it doesn't, all walks alike, right?
Right, Councilmember Coons, that's true, but this is one of those areas, I mean, you're right, I mean, we all understand, traditionally, we think of, you know, public can't turn anybody away, but those sorts of things, but really, within the realm of things like space of this kind, you have a lot of flexibility, not to preclude people from using it, we built it for the public to use it, but to keep it manageable. So I'm going to give this council, from my legal opinion, a lot of discretion with respect to these issues. I mean, I work with Mr. Craig on this policy. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have drafted it the way I drafted it if I did not think it was legal. The standard for your discretion is going to be, is there a rational basis for why, the decision-making that you're making? Everything I've heard right now suggests there's a rational basis for what you're doing.
Karen, and then Joe.
I think the issue is if somebody wanted to come in and rent the field for one time, and it was a competitor-type thing, then I don't have a problem with that, but if they wanted to run their whole league or use a field on a regular basis, then that could be seen to be competition. But if they wanted to use it, you know, for an extra practice because they had grass fields and that were, you know, the grass fields were muddy, and they were willing to pay us to use it and it was available, that's one thing. But if they're going to run a whole league out of it that competes with one of our sanctioned programs, then I have a problem with that.
How do we just think...
Joe?
Yeah, so I guess the, instead of saying that we won't allow you to request field space, we should be putting wording in there about priority. You can request, but the priority of your request would fall behind a program that the, that the city is sponsoring, sort of to address the concerns that we've got about just excluding somebody just because of who they are, as opposed to prioritizing requests based on, are you part of our program, or are you just part of a group that's trying to run a program? And I think we could, you know, I don't, we don't need to design it here, I think we're just trying to give you our concerns. I'm willing to support whatever you guys come up with, Jim. I mean, you guys didn't do this in a vacuum, I'm sure you borrowed this or the ideas from other programs that are like this.
That's true, and we also intentionally did not push it through in a single Parks and Rec Board meeting, so everyone had time to think it through, and we were taking our time and being very careful of how it was crafted.
Bert?
You know, maybe along those lines, I'd rather keep it tighter than I'm happy with the way it is, but along those lines, maybe as we do on some things, you know, at the discretion of the Parks and Recreation Director or something like that, to kind of leave it a little open ended.
You know, where I'm hearing, and, you know, my personal opinion, I think we could maybe soften it up a little, but still have the same general outcome, and by that I mean, you know, not have it come across that we're being totally inclusive just for our, you know, it's more, the community is welcome. But, you know, our programs that we sponsor obviously have first right of refusal and all that. The reality is, in that occasional, you know, issue where another similar program might need a hand, need a field for one day or whatever, I think just being neighborly and community-wise, we could do that. I mean, in reality, you know, honestly, the answer's always an easy answer, it's, no, so there's no field space available because our partner programs are using them, they're booked up. But, you know, at least have that option in case in the rare instances that they weren't, and there was, you know, a way to help out a, you know, again, I don't personally look at it as competition, I look at it as program for all the kids, but that's my view.
One more question to the, can I remember, I mean, I know why we're in a situation two years ago with Hopewell Baseball Association, I know why this is there, but the...
I'm afraid I can't hear you, sir.
I'm just remembering, I'm just thinking of the situation where we went through this with Hopewell Baseball Association two years ago with that additional team that came around. One of the arguments there, too, is that Hopewell was paying for the maintenance of the field at the time.
That is correct.
Right, are they still doing that?
No, they do not.
They do not, yeah, that's for us on that end.
We have now put them in line with the rest of our program providers.
Right. So, so, yeah, I agree with what Longoria said and the mayor said and Karen said, I think we need to figure out a stipulation between, you know, how do we, how do we strike a better balance, if there's a way we could do that. I'm sure we can find a way.
Bill?
Maybe I'll say the same thing everybody else is saying, maybe a little bit differently. But from what I'm hearing from you, Jim, the demand is greater than supply as far as field space goes.
That is correct.
And we need to give preference to those with whom we have contracted and have relationships with. But in the rare event that there's an opening out there, whatever duration of time it is, you know, maybe that's a possibility, and I think that's what the mayor brought forth here, too. But it's, I think that's probably the discretionary part of your position out there is to handle something like that. I have the greatest respect for the way this is written, the way it is, and respects our relationship with these contractors, or contractees, I guess, and that we need to respect it. But I think there's always a possibility out there, there may be a one-hour gap out there, but however you schedule that, I think it's probably near an impossibility to schedule something like that. We have a finite amount of ball fields out there, and I can imagine the challenge you have in scheduling them, so it's, I'm all right with the way the agreement is, but...
If I may comment?
Sure.
When I came up here, when this resented, I wasn't prepared for a discussion on a component of this facility and fields policy that was not being changed. What I believe I'm hearing from you is you would like me to look at item one, the requests to rent a facility. And I understand that and respect that, we can take that back to the Parks and Rec Board. Would you, as a body, be willing to consider moving forward with a vote on the items that we are changing, which would allow us to continue the work, we started with the first motion?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's already in there, so, I mean, not voting on something today isn't going to help us.
Ken, you clear on that?
You know, I am, and, you know, Mr. Craig's right, I mean, the purposes of this policy revision are much less ambitious. You all are, and you have a right to, talking about perhaps some other issues as far as opening it up and responding to some of the things, Councilmember Coons, I mean, I was sitting here jotting down some language after your comments, Councilmember Longoria. It would be pretty easy to effectuate, I think, what you're talking about, and I could easily see some modifications that said that in the order of priority, here is the way field space would be allocated, city-sanctioned programming, non-city-sanctioned programming, but for programming not otherwise offered, right? And then finally, the last tier would be non-city-sanctioned and duplicative of what the city offers as the third-tier element. And that's, that's a pretty easy element.
But that's another...
But that's, that's right, but that's probably something for another day.
And that's part of my concern, too, reading the final sentence of this red item, red line item that we created here really goes back to item one that we had there with, you know, field access is being requested by, we can give Jim the right to decline access to field space if that field access is being requested by individuals or entities in derogation of the statement of intention set forth in this paragraph, and one of those statements is item one. Where are you? The red line on the first page.
He's in the italics language to the bottom.
Down below.
Yeah, this language is a statement of the city council's policy, it's your intention of the council, I'm, so it's the City of Milton, but it's the council, that organizations and leagues having access to Milton fields be organizations as are recognized by the city and which are part of these duly sanctioned organizations. And again, you know, we didn't draft this, as one of you all mentioned, in a vacuum, we drafted it with an eye toward the statements, the enumerated statements above, which is what we thought the manifestation of the city council policy was.
Yeah.
If that changes in the future, Councilmember Coons, then obviously the statement that you all may very well approve tonight would need to change as well.
Yeah.
Karen?
But it sounds like we need to at least vote on 15269 as it was intended this evening, and then perhaps if the majority wants to open it back up for another discussion at a later time.
That is the request, yes, sir.
I would be interested in making a motion to approve agenda item 15269 as presented.
Second? I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Longoria. Any discussion, Matt?
Would the maker of the motion be willing to make in addition to that with the intention of reviewing this as the next...
I think it's been captured, I don't know if it necessarily has to be made in the motion, I think we've captured it, and we can put that on a channel?
How do we just direct staff into doing that?
To the extent the council wants to direct us to open that section up and look at it, take it back to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, I think that'd be the good place to start.
Okay.
And let the board that we have in place that studies those things spend some time and thought on it as they have in these recommendations that came forward, and make a recommendation and bring that back to you.
Does that need to be part of the motion, or can you take that away?
I think I can take it as direction.
I think, all right, I think what we have is we have a motion for second approval as written here. The discussion we're having right now is, is there desire by the council to have staff revisit that and open that particular item up? Is there, Matt, there is, I mean, myself, anybody else?
For minor change of wording, yes.
Okay, so you've got direction on that, but right now we've got the motion, and second for approval, any other comments? All in favor, please, Matt?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I'm going to vote no on this right now, just because that last statement there, because of the principle of this, I just, I just think it needs to be changed, and just to make a statement, but otherwise, I appreciate the work you're doing.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Me.
That passes five to one.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sudi, if you could please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton and Fulton County Schools regarding implementation of an automated enforcement program for school bus stop arm violations, school bus safety camera enforcement program, agenda item number 15270, Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and Council, this is a unique and interesting concept that Fulton County Board of Education brought to us, as well as other cities in Fulton County, in implementing a program where buses are retrofitted with...
a program where buses are retrofitted with camera enforcement on those bus routes where the drivers are self-reporting that they have a significant number of stop harm violations. I didn't learn until the Board of Education came to us that Georgia fluctuates between the most and the second to the most deadly state in school bus stop fatalities. And I wouldn't have known that that was something that, obviously, that's something that the state or that the, we track as a nation. But Georgia ranks very high on that list, unfortunately. We became sought after as a partner in the implementation of this program because of our rural type bus routes and the fact that we have bus stops that occur on streets that have forty-five mile an hour speed limits. They're not all corner intersections in a neighborhood where the speeds are relatively, relatively slow. This is something that Cobb County has implemented with some very good success. The reason that Milton's involved is that if in fact these violations are captured in these school buses, if we go to the Milton Police Department, that would review the video and authorize it to either be a violation or not. This is something that I think you'll see the County Board of Education roll out in an assortment of communities in the north and the south. We're not the first city in Fulton County to participate with them, but we're on kind of that leading edge if we agree to not every bus will be retrofitted with this camera enforcement, only those where there is data that's been collected that would suggest that they have a high likelihood for these violations occurring. It's one of those things where if in fact a violation is observed and it would be a civil penalty that would be sent to the violator, much like red light camera enforcement, the revenues that would be received from that would be split fifty percent with the city and fifty percent with the Board of Education. In talking with the police chief, he is supportive of this and we don't anticipate it to be a time burden on our staff. This would be something that we could quickly, with some regularity, handle the review of the videos and only those videos that would occur with violations that occur in the city of Milton. And it's something that the Board of Education is supportive of. And I'd seek the council's support to move forward with this and see if we can't make our bus stops in Milton safer.
Okay, Bill?
Just make it clear then, we'd only, the police department would only be reviewing those videos where a violation occurred.
That's correct. You have to have a human component that confirms that what they saw is actually a violation before the ticket, call it a ticket, before the civil penalty would, would issue. If there's no violation to be, if there's no violation to be observed, we don't independently look at everyone trying to find the violation.
You're talking about time consuming.
That's, that's correct.
Tickets are issued to the owner of the vehicle. So there's a requirement that we snapshot the license plate or something like that?
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, I got problems with that just on the basis of the owner of the car may not be the operator of the car when the picture's taken. And in order to reconcile that issue, you have to ask the owner of the car, was he driving the car? There's, isn't there all kinds of problems with that?
There's, there's a process that's in place. I'm sure Ken can weigh in. The, the thing that's the difference is that, that's why I use the word civil penalty as opposed to criminal charge, is if a police officer were to witness the violation and choose to write the citation, it would be alleged a criminal act had occurred. This is different in the fact that because it's just a snapshot of a license plate, there's a process by which somebody who owns a vehicle can go through and confirm that they weren't the one operating the vehicle, that having a violation was observed. And there's a process that goes along with that that would also exist in this case. But this is very different. And the nuance between the criminal charge and the civil penalty is a very important distinction.
Okay.
I don't, that's right. I mean, due process.
That's a guilty until proven innocent situation.
I'm sorry?
That's a guilty until proven innocent situation, like Joe's implying.
It's the nuance between alleging something criminal has been conducted, which there is that presumption of innocence until guilt is established versus alleging that a civil wrong had been done. I can let the city attorney weigh in.
Well, that's right. I mean, the standard, the standard between a criminal citation or criminal offense and a civil offense is remarkable. I mean, it's a much different standard. There's no, there's none of the stigma associated with the criminal, with the criminal finding. And candidly, the burdens of proof are much, much less with a civil penalty as opposed to a beyond reasonable doubt criminal matter. So that's why they, it's, it's more, you know, a revenue thing as well.
Well, if that's not an issue and, and there's a chance to impact violators, then I think it's a good idea.
One quick question. The process by such, obviously, drivers driving the bus, does the bus driver relate to our police department that an infraction may have occurred? Or do we just go ahead and watch tapes all day?
No, there's actually a company that will take that aspect of it. And that's something that Fulton County Board of Education is under contract with, would be an independent operator that would watch those violations. Just kind of like, you know, when you, when you, the stop, much like a red light, when the stop bar is open and they, and the camera to some degree senses that there's movement past the bus, that that's when it would snap a, snap a picture. And the, the company would review it first before they even send it to us. So there's one level of scrutiny that says, you know, based upon the first evaluation, we think this is a violation. Then it would come into our inbox where we would actually then spend the time after almost two layers of review before our staff is impacted to have to look at it.
How much time then would our police be spending reviewing these tapes?
We think that that answer is driven by the magnitude of the number of violations. And we don't believe that number to be unmanageable, nor do I necessarily believe that that number is huge. You know, we drive the roads in Milton and the, it would be the exception rather than the rule to seeing somebody pass a school bus with the stop arm open. Although we don't have the driver's seat of the bus every day driving the bus around. And I can tell you that based upon some of Fulton County's data and self-reporting of these violations, of the driver's self-reporting these violations, we have some routes in Milton that would have some consistent violation of this particular.
So do we think it's going to be a range of half an hour to an hour or one hour to four hours?
I'm, I'm looking at it at this point and having talked with the chief, that I don't anticipate it to be more than an hour a week.
Okay. Well, that's good. I just.
Chris, so this is a situation where we're not being engaged as a subject matter expert for any jurisdiction. It's just the city of Milton. Is that correct?
That's right. And Fulton County Board of Education has approved, has approached every city in Fulton County. So this is, they are trying to roll this out countywide. They just need local government partners to be able to do that.
So Councilmember Longoria, you forced my hand here. So I looked up the statute very quickly. So just, just to maybe a curiosity to you. So here's the way the statute says. The, the video of the, of the snapshot of the vehicle serves as prima facie evidence that the vehicle issued or described in the citation was operated in violation of the code section and the defendant was driving. But it may be rebutted by testimony in open court that they were not the driver at the alleged time or that their vehicle had been stolen. So it, it can be rebutted. As the city manager indicated, it's a process. But I suspect it's also drafted with an eye toward most of the time, you're just going to pay your fine.
Yeah. Do the cameras at all take a good picture of the driver in the vehicle? I mean, red light stuff, right?
No, there's no pictures of drivers taken.
Okay, just making sure. I don't know.
All right.
I've seen that before. I've seen it before though.
Make a motion? Yeah. Mayor, I've moved that we approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Milton and Fulton County schools regarding implementation of an automated enforcement program for school bus stop arm violations, agenda item number fifteen dash two seven zero.
Second, the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Longoria for approval, second, Councilmember Lush. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Suzy, if you, the city clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a consent order resolving the issue of road funding and maintenance in Fulton County, agenda item number fifteen two seven one, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. I will tell you, Mr. Mayor, if this is agreeable, items three and four, I would like to just kind of discuss together because they are related. And candidly, with respect to item four, I'm going to ask that you postpone till the next regular meeting anyway. Because as optimistic as we were that we would have item four ready for you to approve in a final form, we don't. And it's just a function of having to deal with Fulton County and all of the many municipalities. And just, I'd say, very challenging thing. We've been working on both items three and four for a good bit of time. As you know, service delivery strategy is one of those things sort of in tandem with local option sales tax that's triggered at the decennial census, two thousand and ten. And of course, the expectation is, is by two thousand and twelve, you'll have all this put together in a nice tidy bow and ratified. Well, this is Fulton County. And we don't. And it's two thousand and fifteen, and we're still working on it. It's under the auspices of a special master who's doing a good job of crowding these cats. And candidly, the consent order in front of you is one of the issues that has been a problem. And that has to do with Fulton County's funding for both what we call local roads and then, of course, major roads, those that are primarily for mobility as opposed to those that are supposed to get you to a certain place like a store or a restaurant. So what we have in front of you is a consent order. And this has been a labor of love. Candidly, once the city of Milton went down and sort of perfected our argument with respect to the biggest issue that we were concerned about with respect to service delivery, which was sewer. And long ago, the city of Milton perfected its rights with respect to sewer with Fulton County. You may recall, we, we have a nice working relationship with Fulton County now under an IGA. And that's what is in the actual service delivery strategy that's in agenda item four. Forget about item four just for a moment. Item three is a consent order that has been circulated by Fulton County. It's been looked at by some of the other municipalities. And it sort of puts to bed the notion of road funding. And so what this consent order does is basically says that Fulton County, with respect to what's called local streets as roads, and they are defined in the order, may be funded by the Fulton County Special Service Tax District. Whereas funding for the, the larger roads, the roads that handle the capacity, the roads that are basically meant to get people quickly through the city, may still be funded by the general fund. So that is the concession that candidly it appears that everybody amongst the various municipalities and Fulton County are agreeable with. The only reason I'm bringing this to you is not because we have had sign off by everybody, it's because I believe that Judge Birch at some point is going to say, I want these approved now. And I would rather have this consent order ratified by you as not. So we're able to act on a dime if we need to. So I am recommending at this point that the council ratify this consent order. I'm not sure exactly when Judge Birch is going to demand these be presented to him. But I will tell you, the last extension he gave was on September thirtieth, and it was for thirty days. My math puts that right at the end of October. And whether another extension comes or not, it may be. But I'd rather have this ratified and not have to ask the city manager to have you have a special call meeting on October twenty-ninth or October twenty-eighth. The actual service delivery strategy, which is item four, I hoped it would be done. It's not done. And it's not done, it's not complete for any fault of Milton's. There's a lot of other moving parts that apparently need to be perfected that don't involve the city of Milton. So I don't have that ready for you tonight. I was optimistic I would, but I just don't. So I would request you ratify number three, the consent order, and we'll just postpone the actual service delivery strategy on number four to the next regular meeting.
Okay.
Well, how does the service delivery strategy affect the road funding?
They're, they're, they're in tandem because you can't talk about service delivery without talking about allocation of tax funds. So one of the big sort of, I guess, sort of the dividing points between some of the municipalities, and candidly, Milton has not been one of the most ardent, I guess, critics of the funding mechanism. Candidly, I think we've just been comfortable allowing some of the other cities that have more skin in the game to handle it. But I, I don't know that they're directly related at this point. I just know that they have been a sticking point for this entire process is the, is the road funding. It's basically the municipality is not happy with Fulton County using general funds for basically what are considered local roads. That has been the sticking point. I think Fulton County has given on that. And this consent order addresses that.
Just give us the background and the fact that the main, the main driver in North Fulton County that was moving this agenda and this issue forward is one, and certainly we would be in support of that, was the city of Roswell. And to the extent Roswell stopped fighting it, we might have picked up the battle. But frankly, Roswell fighting it, they were doing a good job. They were doing it with their own staff attorney. It was an easier position for us to grab onto their coattails and go, and go where they went so long as they continued to go there. And, and that's kind of what has happened here. So we, we do in fact support and appreciate the fact that they advanced the position that they did. And it dealt with using general fund dollars to pave and repay what we would consider very minor streets in the unincorporated areas of South Fulton. And the notion that that should be funded out of a special service district as opposed to the general fund. I concur with the city attorney's recommendation to ratify this consent order. And then we'll bring back on November fourth, the service delivery strategy for you to look at.
And, you know, it may be some members of the council that we just wait till two thousand and twenty and bring you back another one that's run fine as well. So it's, city manager and I, we discussed that all.
Sure.
Well, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the consent order resolving the issue of road funding and maintenance in Fulton County, agenda item fifteen two seven one.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt for approval, second by Councilmember Thurmond. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. So we'll just, number four, the item, we'll bring it back.
Mr. Mayor, could I have a motion to defer that one?
Do we need a motion to defer it?
It's a motion to defer till November the second.
Okay.
I'll move to defer final service delivery strategy agreement between the city of Milton, Fulton County, and all other municipalities in Fulton County, agenda item number one five two seven two, to the regular council meeting of two November fifteenth.
Second.
I have a motion for deferral till November second by Councilmember Lush, second from Councilmember Kicks. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. We'll, we'll move on to reports. I just want to say something. We didn't have a meeting last Monday, so the prior Saturday, a week, week ago, had our ribbon cutting out at Bell Memorial Park. And just want to say it was, it was really kind of neat to stand out there. In fact, I stood with a family that my son and their son played baseball, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, and thinking back on, you know, what we played, played on there. And then just kind of looking around and seeing what it's become. And just kind of a proud moment. And I could see it in the faces of the, the kids that had played there in the past, but, and the parents and also the new ones. So, you know, for all you guys and Jim and everybody else, Carter, I mean, everybody that's put a lot of work into that council, it's really an impressive, impressive feat. And I've heard lots of compliments from other folks just, you know, in, in general about it. So good job, guys. It was a proud moment. So. The other thing, I know there's a, a couple of council members that might want to, had brought up, talking about some procedures on possibly changing on AG one. And I wanted to see if we have a consensus, or consensus, or at least enough folks that want, maybe want to, you know, meet on that and have a discussion about that. I know Chris sent out an email. So we, good, maybe next work session or whatever. Is there enough folks that want to?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think that deserves some more discussion.
Okay, good. All right. Anybody, council, want to say anything? All right, I'll move on staff.
Just a couple of updates real quick before we get to, we're going to have four tonight. Human Sam's not here tonight with us, so we're going to have to move human resources to the next, to the next meeting. Want to let you know that the Rivers Alive event went off well this weekend. We don't have anybody here to kind of give a follow-up on that, but I'm sure we'll ask somebody from Milton Rose Green or Teresa to give you a follow-up on that at some point. And I engaged Bert over the weekend at the Kroger grocery store about a piece of equipment that he might have that can help us get something out of a creek that they couldn't lift out. There's some, a small refrigerator was found in one of the creek stream banks. So I will work with Bert. And Carter's going to help along with that to see if we can work at getting that out of there. So a good event over the weekend. I want to let you know, as you know by email, that this coming Friday is Jason Wright's last day with Milton. Jason has accepted a position with the Research Library at Georgia Tech, George Institute Technology, and as their communications manager. So his last day will be Friday. We'll have lunch scheduled, I think, on Friday for him. So information on that will be coming out. And we wish Jason the best of luck as he transitions to the next step in his career. Don't tailing off of that, I need to let you know that I will be exercising the authority I have in the procurement policy to do, to execute an emergency purchase for the next three months and bringing on a local, a consultant that specializes in communications and local government to fill some of the most immediate gaps that Jason was keeping. and local government to fill some of the most immediate gaps that Jason was keeping up with, the least of which was our website maintenance, as well as some of our document production and design, so some of the backend stuff. It seemed to be a natural, short-term, easy transition fix as we put together a plan that is more long-term. That acquisition is $3,000 a month for three months, so it will expire in 90 days, and we'll have a more permanent plan put in place. But that should keep us, we've met, in a transition with that department, that should, from the external perspective, should not look any different to the end user by being able to move forward with that as our transition plan. It is within budget. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions, if you have any about that, but one of the things that procurement policy requires me to do, when I do exercise that authority, is to notify the council that I am doing it. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any, either now or at a later date.
Okay, and I just want to just make sure to thank you, Jason, for everything you've done, been here all the time, and wish you well in your next opportunities, so, good luck.
Have you learned to say "go jackets" yet? Not yet.
Just as long as you can communicate, that's all.
All right, then we're moving on tonight to the four department updates. We'll start with Chief Edgar with the Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I want to thank you for your support and approval of the purchase of the new ladder truck. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise I'll jump on to some of these other items I have.
What's the delivery time?
12 to 18 months. The committee is planning to go to the plant in mid-November, and they will do a pre-construction meeting and go through all the fine details to make sure everything is right, and along, you know, with the spec that they put together. So, once that's completed, they'll go right into the line and start construction.
Is Quint going to be able to limp along for another 18 months?
Yes, as soon as we get it back in service. It is sitting at Cumming Motors right now in Gainesville. There was a few items that had gone bad on the truck, so, it's been out for about a week now, out of service. Fortunately, we still have that great agreement with Alpharetta where we're utilizing their reserved ladder, so. The fuel management system has been installed at Station 41 and 43. The only piece left now is the training component of that. Once we complete the training, that system will be up and running, and that will allow some better accountability of our fuel usage and planning for the future, as in budget plans and such for fuel, so. Last week, the emergency manager, Matt Marietta and myself, we attended the Atlanta Emergency Preparedness Institute down in Atlanta, and the purpose of that was to learn how they are doing emergency planning for businesses, and how they can get them back up and running after a, some type of a catastrophic event that shuts down businesses. It teaches them how to do risk assessments, as well as critical infrastructure repairs and stuff, so we can get this community back up and running, get the businesses open, so they can start serving the community again. Our goal is to bring that program to Milton in the future. I don't have a timeline on that, but it was such a good program and such support from the community, the business community there, I think that's something very much worthwhile to bring here to the city of Milton. So, that's something we plan on doing in the future. We also donated a home off Freemanville Road, the address is 15290 Freemanville Road. That home was donated to the Fire Department to do burn exercises and eventually burn it down for the homeowner. We're going through the permitting process right now. This home is close proximity to White Columns community, so we are also reaching out to them to advise them that this training is going to go on, and eventually, at the end of that training, we will burn that home down for them. The training is forecast to begin November 2nd, that week, and then burn it on November 4th. So, if anybody is interested in participating in any of those exercises, we're more than happy to accommodate you all, so.
Children on the trailer?
It's always exciting to get a firsthand opportunity to step into a live burn, so, if somebody's interested, just let me know. Through an invitation from Jim Craig, I had the opportunity to sit before the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, to advise him of our plans to put a training facility, a training tower on Birmingham Park. After some discussion, they did support the idea of that, where, you know, our training facility, which we've talked about, I believe, in the past, that will be sitting just inside Birmingham Park, just right adjacent to Fire Station 43. So, that advisory group has supported the project. And as I mentioned, I think a couple of weeks ago, or last month, I talked about Rural Metro going to 12-hour transport units opposed to their 24-hour units. They've done that now, and just last week, we had our second transport with Rescue 42, because that unit from Rural Metro was coming from Sandy Springs, and the call was just two doors down from Station 43. So, our unit did a second transport for that. We had billed Rural Metro for our time and mileage and fuel and all of that, as per the contract, so they've accepted that without any feedback, I guess, at all from them, other than they're working on it, trying to keep units up here in the city. But again, that unit has paid off for what we, you know, we had hoped it would do, and it's doing that. But we also keeping a close eye on Rural Metro and their response times, and how often we're not having a unit in the city, so. And one last thing, we submitted a bike grant, a bicycle team grant, to the Milton First Responders Foundation through a partnership with Police and Fire. We're asking for four bikes, and we'll put two fire EMS personnel on one, and two police officers on the other two bikes, and they'll be used during special events and all. So, the grant has asked them to help pay for the bikes, the uniforms. The training's been offered to be through Alpharetta for free, so there's no cost at that. So, we think that this is going to be a great program for the community, assuming that the foundation approves the grant request, but I believe, I believe they will, they've supported the idea in the past, so. So, that's before them now, we're just waiting for a response on that, and once we have more details on that, I'll be happy to share them with you in the future. And that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Finance?
Bernadette isn't here today, so I will report on finance. One of the things I would like to point out to you, if you look at your chart for the finance analytics for this month, you'll notice that the property taxes collected was reported at 21%, and that is for 2015 property taxes, and there are no expenditures and revenues reported, because we won't report those until the CAFRA is done, which should be the latter part of February. So, you'll see the stars there in those two columns, or the two cells, through the remainder of this year. I can put something in there, but it just, it will be changed each month as we, as we go through and get things prepared for the audit. So, as you know, the budget was approved, thank you very much for that. We put that into the system and have already started operating off of the 2016 budget. And as Bernadette wanted to point out, preparations for the 2015 audit has begun, and we will continue to go through that. I believe the auditors usually come in January and should finish up their audits by the end of February, in time for the reporting to be done in March. Alcoholic beverage license renewal packets have been mailed out, they are due back November 15th to avoid penalty and interest charges, and any business that fails to renew by December 15th will have the license revoked, have to go through the process all over again. And we are keeping close tracks, on close track on that process as we go through it. We were pretty successful last year in having only one or two alcohol license holders late on their renewals, but they weren't all the way to the December 15th point, so, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Sure.
Bill?
Help me understand this again, I know we went through a renewal application for one of the establishments out there. Now, is the renewal date the end of the year for all of those licenses, or are they on the anniversary date of when they first applied for them, or first are granted a license?
So, if you're talking about alcohol beverage license, it's November 15th is the renewal date. It doesn't matter when they get their license throughout the year, it is November 15th. So, even if they got their license October 1st, it is still November 15th for the next year.
Okay.
And when December 16th shows up, is it automatically revoked?
Yes. They can have their license until the end of, end of the calendar year, and then at that point, they can no longer serve alcohol.
What if they come in on the 16th of December to pay up, it's done?
They have to go through the process all over again, so they are new business.
Be applying and all that, gotcha.
And then, business licenses are, as of January 1st, and they're due what, in March, or?
They're due in March. We have a grace period to allow them to get their accounts in order, so that they can report their gross receipts.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Chief.
No tie again.
No, I tell you what, though, if Bob lets me run through a burning building, I will wear a tie for the next minute. I'm volunteering right now. Yeah? All right, you'll see a tie. All right, well, I'm excited about that. Okay, update on the cloud deployment. As of this week, we are moving into pilot testing, so we have about a quarter of the employees at City Hall who will be testing the virtual environment to make sure that there's no bugs or anything we need to work out, any kinks we need to work out before the go-live date. And actually, we're going to be going, the target date for the soft launch is November 16th, the week of November 16th. So, we'll have a few weeks from now to go ahead and just make sure everything's working right, address any issues that come up, and then, well as well, we'll also update the, our web mail, so you may see a change in that in the next coming weeks, to Office 365, Joe, I'm sure you're familiar with that. It will probably look a little bit different, we're still kind of working through how feasible that is to do in the short term, but we can let you know further on that. And then, the, after the soft launch on November 16th, we'll give that a couple of weeks, and then December 7th is our hardware replacement date, where we'll take all the old computers we have in City Hall and replace them with new cloud-friendly computers. So, that's it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
David.
Can sign it up.
Is it just a coincidence that we managed to close as many calls as we open in a given month, and there's never any carryover? Or is it just a testament to the fact that the kind of questions that we open up are so small that they can be addressed right away?
We generally, at the end of a month, we generally do have a few tickets open, but it's the same number of tickets we had open at the beginning of the month. So, it's not the same open and close tickets, but it's about the same turnaround, I should say.
I just found it interesting that we managed to always seem to do that, except for a couple of months way in the beginning, but, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay. Angela?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a couple of things I'd like to recap about Crab Apple Fest. We, thanks to almost every department in the city, many citizen volunteers, CCA, and Courtney Spriggs specifically, I'd like to say we had such a successful Crab Apple Fest. We had about 8,000 people in attendance for a very rainy day, for those of us that were there, and we came in under budget, and our cost per attendee was $2.97. So, it's still very good, even though we didn't have our sunny day that we had hoped for. We have three new events coming up, I wanted to make sure have your attention. Carving and Crab Apple is this Sunday, it's from 2:00 to 5:00, it's a new event, it's a "bring your own pumpkin" event, which is a unique thing for our community. We have Veterans Day Coffee, which is a new event for our community as well. It's, we're basically going to invite all veterans to join us for a cup of coffee from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. on November 11th at Wilburn Rudy's Scratch and Mugs, and we'll pick up the tab for that black coffee. We debated what else to include, but I think that's a great thing. We hope everyone will come out and enjoy the company of our veterans and tell them thank you for what they've done, that they've served our country. We also have the Milton Literary Festival, which I've mentioned to you before, that's coming up quickly on November 13th and 14th. I wanted to also let you know about a new initiative for Better Together, the Village Volunteers, you may have seen some stuff last week on social media about it. We started it off on Monday. It's, they're going to meet twice weekly at the Bethel Community Center. It's an opportunity for special needs young adults who have already graduated school, and this is a social outing for them, to give them an opportunity to do arts and crafts, music activities, and exercise. It's a pretty incredible program that was brought to us by a mother in the community that wanted something for her two kids to do, and it's really grown. We've, every meeting has had, they've had three meetings now, and they've had new people come out, so I look forward to seeing how it grows. Any questions?
Are y'all needing any kind of arts and craft supplies or anything for that, or how do they?
I'm sure they would love donations. Right now, the mom is actually, Diane Stewart has funded everything for it, for the group. I'm sure she would be very open to donations. Great question.
Okay, hang on.
All right.
Thank you, and again, Crab Apple, the event Crab Apple, I thought worked very well, as you said, to be, bad weather and all that, huge, you know, great turnout, and you guys did a great job, so everybody involved, so we appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the staff side?
I just wanted to come up and say thank you very much. It's been a great six years, and I really appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to be a part of Milton, and I'm really grateful for everything that I was able to do here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason, keep in touch. Okay, nothing else, that'll conclude our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Your motion is second to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thanks, everybody.